Okay, Jalen, could you find a microphone? There's a microphone right behind you, I think. And we have the flags are over here to our right, to your left. And whenever you're ready, just have us start. Whenever you're ready, Jalen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jalen. Before you leave the microphone, could you tell us what grade you're in and what school you're going to?
I am in Barge Lincoln.
I can't hear you, honey.
I'm going, I'm in Barge Lincoln.
You're at Barge Lincoln? And is that for summer school or is that your regular school?
My regular school.
And you're going to summer school, too?
I, we finished summer school already.
Did you enjoy it?
Yes.
Yeah, good for you. And what grade are you in, Jalen?
Right now, I'm in third. I'm about to go to fourth.
Good for you. Congratulations. Thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
You did a great job with the pledge. Make sure that you tell your principal and your teacher that we said that, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, next item on the agenda is the land acknowledgement. And Reverend Davis, could you read the land acknowledgement tonight, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral land of the 14 Confederated tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kitata, Kitata, Kitata in Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native people who are tied to the land through history, legend, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We take, we thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immoral. And acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step towards correcting the stories and practices that erase indigenous peoples' history and culture. It also honors the truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relationship with the Yakima Nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Davis. Next item on the agenda is recognition of the passing of one of our former teachers, Sally Fitch, who passed away on July 7th. Sally was a longtime teacher in the Yakima School District, and as a young woman, she loved living in Yakima, where she developed some lifelong, some lifelong friendships. She led or was a member of multiple clubs, committees, and social service groups during her time at Davis High School. She was the class salutatorian and was part of the first class to graduate from A.C. Davis High School in 1958. After high school, Sally continued her education at the University of Washington, where she graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in History and Language. She also received a teaching certificate from the University of Washington. Sally later earned a Master of Arts in History at Purdue University. The best way to describe Sally is through her passion, which was travel, textiles, and teaching. As a teacher for over 30 years, Sally taught many subjects, but Spanish and world history were her favorites. She taught in many Yakima-area schools, including Wilson, Lewis &amp; Clark, Eisenhower, and Stanton. In the classroom and across the valley, she was known as La Señora de Fitch. If you asked her where she enjoyed teaching the most, she would undoubtedly include Stanton Academy. At Stanton, Sally appreciated the sensitivities and unique stories of the students, and she enjoyed the tight-knit community of this particular setting. In 1991, Sally was awarded a National Endowment for the Humanities Award as Washington State's Outstanding Teacher Scholar. Sally is survived by her husband of 57 years, Jim, son Ted, and daughter Katie, along with five grandchildren. She is also survived by her sister Kathy and brother George, as well as numerous cherished nieces, nephews, and cousins whom she always adored. She worked for the Yakima School District between 1980 and 2004. I was privileged to have Mrs. Fitch as the teacher for one of my children, and it was always a pleasure to interact with her. She had such a zest for life about her that you had to smile whenever you talked to her. If you would just join me, please, for a moment of silence in recognition of the passing Thank you very much. Our condolences go to her family and friends. Next, we have acknowledgements and recognitions. And due to the nature of tonight's acknowledgements, I've asked Superintendent Green to deliver those.
Thank you, President Rice, members of the board. It is truly an honor for me this evening to recognize some individuals that have contributed so much to the district, to our community, and who represent the Yakima community and district very, very well. Coming here tonight, those of you who will be honored, I want to thank you because we know that the greatest gift that you can give somebody is the time that you're sacrificing for others. And we know being here this evening is a sacrifice, and certainly anything we can do to honor you and recognize your achievements is of benefit to us as a community. So thank you again for your time. So I will go ahead and recognize these individuals in no particular order because everybody has some tremendous accomplishments. So I think what I will do is maybe recognize the first person that I knew out of these people being recognized. So I would ask Coach Gene Rossfeld, would you please stand? Thank you so much. And if you wouldn't mind, we'd love to have you walk over here to the microphone because we might have you sing a song or a poem or something. So while you're walking over, I remember as an alumnus of Davis High School, I continue to get better as I grow older. I'm not as good as I once was, but when I look back on my high school career, I think I was much better than I was. Unfortunately, one of the desires that I had was to actually play for this gentleman, Coach Gene Rossfeld. I lacked in talent. I was certainly what I, I think I was too short and too slow to make it on the basketball team, but I was always impressed by his drive, his leadership, what he meant to the Davis community, and what he still means to the Davis community. Not only that, he has served in the district for quite a few years, or served in the district. And I'll just read here a couple of lines about Coach, Coach Gene Rossfeld. He coached at Davis for nine years, from '79 to '87, and has been, among other things, a longtime tournament manager for the state championships in the Sun Dome. I'd love to hear a little bit, how many years did you work in that capacity volunteering and bringing the state championships to the Sun Dome, Coach?
Well, first of all, I couldn't have done it without the support of the Yakima School District because as an employee, when you do those kind of things, you spend quite a bit of time away from work. But we've run the state basketball tournament in Yakima for 22 years. That's 34 tournaments and 1,752 games. Just the economic impact of that to the community in those 34 tournaments is somewhere around $70 million. Talk about motels, food, and everything else. But I think what's more important is that prior to doing the state basketball tournaments, people didn't look favorably on the Yakima community for a lot of reasons that we all know. But after people came here over all those years, they found that this is a great place to live, great place to go to school. It's a great community, and we really, truly made this a community event and project with businesses and school district and everybody else. So again, I thank school district for the support, and we all made it happen. And everybody agrees that we ran the best basketball tournaments in the state, and we set the standard.
Thank you so much. And before you part, I'll just go ahead and continue here. It says that you worked for the Yakima School District from September of 1978 to June of 2010 for a total of 32 years in the Yakima School District. Amazing, please.
And 15 when you left, right?
And how many, how many years did you serve as our district athletic director?
Well, in athletics, I probably served a total of 15 years. I did it for eight years, then I was Director of Central Registration, and then towards the end of that, I got added District Athletic Director responsibilities. And then after I retired, I was rehired for five more years as District Athletic Director.
Okay, wonderful. Failed retirement once and came back, so we appreciate that we got five more years from you. Thank you so much. And then I think the big congratulations is in order because a couple of weeks ago, you were honored with a service award, and we certainly wanted to recognize that. It was you received the Ed and Shirley Pepple Service Award, and that is a tremendous accomplishment. I don't know, I'm not really familiar. I know that Coach Pepple was a longstanding coach who did tremendous things on the west side of the state, but knowing that you received this award at a state recognition and that you are acknowledged for all of the great things that you represent to the Yakima community and the Yakima School District from the bottom of my heart and from the heart of the school board, thank you so much for your service and thank you for being here this evening to be acknowledged.
All right, thank you for coming.
We wanted, we wanted to come on up? Could we have you come up and just, we'd just love to shake your hand if that would be okay?
Or an elbow bump.
Or an elbow bumper, a fist bumper.
Thank you so much for all you've done.
All right, thank you, Coach. And that'll take us to our next honoree. We are very grateful to have another coach, outstanding coach with us. And going back to my own personal experiences, when I couldn't make it in basketball, I decided that I would try to coach. I never made it again to the varsity level, but I was able to be a varsity assistant. And I know that we traveled in quite a few places, and I remember very vividly going up to Wenatchee and always being impressed with the Wenatchee basketball team up there. And I would look up into the stands, and I would see Coach Juarez kind of leaning back on the bleachers. Sometimes he had his hands behind his head and his legs crossed, and he was just kind of watching the warmups. And I was just always impressed with the caliber of preparation that his teams had. And he did a phenomenal job up there, and I was astounded when we were able to have him come to the Yakima School District and to start teaching and coaching for us here in the district. He coached for, he has coached at Davis for nine years, oh, I'm sorry, for, he's in his 16th season at Davis, where he entered the delayed campaign with 226 wins, seven league titles, and a state championship in 2012. Knowing that that is something that was achieved here in Yakima is just tremendous. We know that our students can perform, our athletes can perform when they have what they need, and that includes quality teachers and exceptional coaches. So the work that he did in bringing a state championship to our district is quite amazing, and we're very grateful for that. Over 35 years as a head coach, it included 13 in Wenatchee. He has 440 wins. Eli Juarez, Eliseo Juarez, has worked for the Yakima School District since August of 2006 for a total of 15 years. And tremendous honor now having a living legend here with us in the world of coaching. He was inducted into the WIBCA Hall of Fame this past month. Coach Juarez, could you please approach the mic? Thank you.
Don't ask me too many questions on numbers because my whole thing is if I start thinking about numbers, it's really time to retire, you know? Listen, let me just give you about five sentences. You know, Gene over there was also a Davis coach, and it was easy for me after Shag left because both those individuals, they left a tradition already in place, and I was very, very fortunate to jump in and take over for them. I just hope I didn't do it any damage along the way. But, you know, two great individuals that have also put their time in at Davis High School, and they really represented that tradition, and I merely just kind of moved it on a little bit more. So anyway, that's all I got.
Well, thank you so much. I don't know if any board members have any follow-up questions?
Coach Juarez, I just want to, on behalf of the board, congratulate you on this recognition. It is certainly one that's well-earned. You have a great reputation within our particular athletic district and within our community and across the state. And we are very lucky, in fact, to have, to have you and to have had you for this period of time at Davis High School. I know the kids enjoy working with you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from board members?
I would just like to thank Coach Eli. When I first moved here in 2014, November, he welcomed me with open arms to be a participant with this basketball team. They went to state that year. We had a good time in Tacoma. And I would travel back and forward because of church, and he was like, "How don't you just stay?" I said, "Well, I have to preach on Sunday." We would, you know, but it was the way the young people and the parents, how they respect you and to see these young men today, that lesson, that the lessons that you teach them about teamwork and about being a man and growing up is working now. And I just want to say thank you for all the work that you have done and you continue to do. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you. And you know, the thing about, you know, coaching in general and understanding what coaching is all about, and I talked to Mr. Green a little bit earlier about our 2012 group and how they changed the culture of Davis High School when they came in as freshmen and when they graduated as seniors, and then they eventually took the state championship. I mean, there's so many people that touch our lives as coaches, and my recognition at the Hall of Fame, as I've told everyone, you know, I got there, yes, I worked hard and I did my best, but there's been a lot of people along the way, whether it's the Yakima School District or whether it's, you know, a principal, whether it's a student, whether it's my players, and my players had a big part in it. But there's lots of people that connect with you, and then you happen to do some things that are very good, and then they recognize you at the end. But once again, yes, it is, it is me, and I thank you very much, but also understand that it is a community, and the Yakima School District is a great community to work in for the last, once again, too many years, maybe X amount of years. But just to tell you that, you know, when people associate with you, great things can happen. Hopefully, you guys can work with our school district to make it even better than it was before.
Thank you, Coach. Thanks for being here, and congratulations again.
We invite you up here as well if you have, if you could come on up and... Thank you. All right. This is certainly a wonderful way to start the evening, acknowledging fantastic people. And we're taking another lesson from Coach Rossfeld, Coach Juarez, and acknowledging others. And in thinking about the circumstances of the pandemic and what we've gone through, I'm very excited to as well honor another individual. And I'd like to read a short paragraph or two about his accomplishments. This is actually, this individual is Andy Gonzalez. Andy, could you step up over here so everybody can, yeah, we'll get you away from the corner there? We, you know, you know how humble he is as he tries to blend in with the wall there and not be recognized. But what we have here is the ESD 105 Regional Classified School Employee of the Year for our area, and he is one of nine candidates from various regions throughout the state up for the title of Washington State Classified School Employee of the Year. So we're looking at very likely, very possibly, the Classified Employee of the Year. I certainly believe that not to acknowledge him in that capacity, which would be a huge miss. But be that as it may, Andy Gonzalez is not about the accolades, not about being acknowledged. He's much like Coach Juarez expressed. He grinds, he does his job, he does good things, he creates the conditions for others to succeed, and every once in a while, good things happen and you get acknowledged. And that's what has happened certainly in this instance under his leadership. In reading on, it states, "The Yakima School District Technology Director, Andy Gonzalez, who last summer and fall developed and launched a digital equity initiative so that all school district students could fully participate in remote instruction, occurred this last school year. And in addition, he has served as the technology director since July of 2015 and has been with the school district for nearly 30 years, has a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge. After starting as a computer company that supported a study of DNA sequencing, he decided to take his first position with the school district's computer services operations in February of 2002, and moved into the role of interim technology director for most of 2012, 13 school year, and worked as assistant technology director for two years, starting in July of 2013." Personally, for me, it's been an honor to be associated with Andy and to see the creativity, the leadership that he has shown. And then thinking back on a personal level, that this is one individual that I remember from middle school when I was in the lower valley, and being connected with him and being so impressed and just having, and not knowing his intellect or his leadership capability, but just knowing how he builds relationships and connects with people is just as important. And I think that's, speaks to his leadership as well. So I'd ask everybody to please join me in honoring Andy Gonzalez.
I'm humbled and honored by this recognition, and I can't, you know, speak to this group without acknowledging the team that made this happen. There were efforts throughout the district that made this possible. To say that it was just the technology department that made the technology effort happen would not be accurate. From our maintenance and operations departments, our custodial departments, our business services, all of our departments, I don't want to leave anybody out, so I'm going to stop there and just, and go, all of our departments, human resources, you name it. There were significant efforts on all parts. To be recognized by that is truly a gift, and I can't speak enough to, again, everybody's efforts made this possible. I just get to stand up here and take the applause for it.
Well-deserved recognition, Andy.
Any other comments? All right, Andy?
Good luck for the state recognition. I think you're a shoe-in, but I don't have a say in it.
Yeah. Andy, I do want to just thank you one more time. I think being in the area of technology is very challenging, and not just because it's technology. For some of us are technologically challenged, but it's one of those areas that things do go wrong. And even when you have things in place, if there is human error, whether it's self-error on the, on the person actually using the computer, I know that sometimes technology tends to take the hit in that, and it's not fair, but it's how it tends to end up in technology. And Andy has been just a model of an example in showing that, you know, no matter what the circumstances, no matter how people approach him or feel about the work that he's doing, if you continue to do the right thing, it's possible to be recognized and have your team recognized. So again, Andy, thank you. Invite you up as well to shake hands with the board.
I would like to also state that when we met in middle school, I was sadly this height as well.
I actually looked down to him, looked up to him. Next, I would like to invite two people to stand up. I will not break these two up because of the influence that they had, but John Pleasance and Sarah Cordova, could you please stand over near the mic? Over this last year, as we know, a crisis does not necessarily build leadership. A crisis actually reveals, the potential reveals the leadership that exists. And we have had our fair share of challenges over the course of the last year. It has been an incredible time in the history of our country, in the history of the district. And we know that we've had people that are in opposition to decisions that are made and people that are in agreement with decisions that are made, and it would vacillate back and forth depending on what the issue was. One of the challenges was around the area of graduation, and we had a very challenging opportunity in front of us, which was how to conduct a graduation and celebrate students who deserved the recognition, but were possibly going to be denied that opportunity due to circumstances beyond their control. Because of the work of these two individuals, we were able to hold at least the first outside, outdoor graduation ceremony that I know of in the history of the Yakima School District, but I'm sure if you go back far enough, there was probably an outdoor graduation way, way, way back when. But I can tell you that without the work of John Pleasance and Sarah Cordova, we would not have had the type of ceremony that we had. And in recognition of the efforts of the two of you, and we also know that there were many others that contributed to the graduation, but we have selected you two because of your leadership and the direction and support that you have shown the district under extreme circumstances. And this evening, we will be presenting you with an above and beyond award. So we're grateful for all of your work and invite you to say a few words if you would.
First of all, thank you to Superintendent Green and members of the board. It was an honor and a privilege to serve you. I'd like to add that my experience, only 90 days or less, less than 90 days it took to put this together, was a gift to me, given to me on my birthday, March 24th. Yes. I'm not kidding. It was former principal Ryan McDaniel, Davis High School stepped out on my birthday, my 60th birthday, and says, "John, we're going to do graduations in Duffel Stadium. We had a meeting, and we want you to take it on. We'll support you." "Awesome, okay, I'll do this." So what that, the gift was to me was an extension of trust and confidence. It was a vote of confidence in my ability to do it, and I took that seriously and just moved forward and ran with it, made some phone calls, and, you know, made it happen and brought people together and found that we had an amazing team. Everybody worked well together and understood that we just keep moving forward. We got all the big pieces together and got the little stuff done in the last couple of weeks. And from what I understand, there was no outbreaks or anything, and nobody got hurt, and it all worked well. And it worked so well that people says, "Hey, you know, we should do this again." I said, "Well, what was the weather like two weeks before? What was the weather like about 10 days after?" You know, it's always a gamble. It'd be fun if we could guarantee the weather would be like that, but I don't think so. But again, it's also an opportunity for my students, my stage crew kids. It's our mission at Davis High School to... it's our mission at Davis High School and the community to uplift and uphold, uh, uh, the culture and the community and those in the spotlight, where we usually stand in the background and support others. Again, thank you, it's an honor.
I want to echo what John said, it was an honor and a pleasure to be able to provide our students an appropriate graduations last year. And it was a, an amazing opportunity to get, get to work alongside with John. He is a genius, absolute amazing person, and I am so thankful for the leadership that he showed and the organizational skills. Um, students did a phenomenal job as well, so thank you very much.
Uh, fa- final comments on my, my part before you come up. I, I think that, uh, the example that the two of you have set and it even goes back to Andy and, and Coach Waters and Coach Rossold, uh, it's a, a perfect example of why you hire great people and you hire great people so that they will tell you what to do, not so that you can tell them what to do. And listening to your counsel, uh, on graduation and knowing that that was something that we could turn over to the both of you and step away and have it be successful was a tremendous, uh, uh, opportunity for us. Uh, we greatly appreciate that because it, it was able to, we were allowed to focus on, uh, on, continue focus on teaching and learning and wrapping up the rest of the school year. Uh, so thank you again for your extreme, uh, ownership and leadership, uh, during extreme times. And we do, uh, invite you up unless there are any other comments.
I just want to say thank you. I can't imagine the degree of planning that went into that. But as a person who participated in all the graduations, it, you wouldn't know that it was probably a tremendous amount of planning because it just went so smoothly. And that's due in part, well, in great part to all of the hard work that went on, pardon me, behind the scenes and all the planning that went into making that, those celebrations, excuse me, the, making those celebrations memorable for the students and the families that participated in them. So thank you very much. We have certificates for you.
Um, if you were one of the honorees, we, it would be okay if you, uh, wanted to exit. Uh, if you want to stay, certainly, but we just wanted to give you that opportunity as well.
We do have two opportunities for comments from the public this evening. If you wish to make a comment to the board, there's a sign in sheet over there, um, against the wall, we would ask that you fill that out so that we have record of who's here and who wants to speak and on what topic they wish to speak. Also, because we are in a school building and we are bound by, um, the requirements that, uh, when in a school building masks be worn, we would, um, encourage you to wear a mask. If you don't have one, one can be provided to you. If you still do not wish to wear a mask, we would invite you to enjoy this, um, presentation via Zoom from your home where it's probably a little cooler than what it is in this auditorium tonight. Um, next we have reports from members of the board. Do any board members have reports that they wish to make? Okay. Next is the superintendent's update, Dr. Green.
Uh, thank you, uh, President Rice, um, back at it again. Thank you for the, uh, microphone. Uh, superintendent's update, please keep in mind that, uh, we typically have, we do have only one business meeting in the month of July, so, uh, excuse me if this is a little bit lengthy, I will try to expedite the superintendent report. Uh, we are missing, and I would excuse, um, our assistant superintendent of operations, uh, Ms. Stacy Locke, and also our assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, Jenny Rodriguez, who are unable to be with us this evening. And on top of that, uh, we are missing, um, our entire COVID response team who is usually here, Jewel Brumley is not here, and Jessica Post was going to fill in, uh, but, uh, was unable to as well. So I will take you very briefly through the COVID report and, uh, hope to do somewhat of an adequate job compared to my colleagues who did, do this on a regular basis. Uh, to give you a very brief update, we see an increase of daily cases over the last three weeks. Uh, in the Yakima County, we're currently looking at around, uh, close to 40 cases, uh, per day. Our 14, uh, day case rate per hundred thousand, uh, is exceptionally high going back to the beginning of the month. We are currently at 229 as compared to 114, uh, on June 6th. So we do see an increase. Our seven day rate is certainly not as high as 229, but it is at 128, uh, per hundred thousand. Uh, so it is, uh, it does correlate. We have our zip code, uh, uh, information about, uh, the impact of COVID by zip code in our community that is also shared, uh, on this document. And we do see increases around the area codes of 98902, 01, 08, 03, and 42, uh, with the largest increase, uh, being in the area of 98901 in that community. So that is the, uh, hotspot out of the five, but all are increasing currently at the moment. Uh, hospitalizations over the last, uh, going by, uh, throughout this month have, have remained pretty steady. Uh, they are currently around, uh, 23, uh, today, 24, uh, on the 23rd, a week ago, uh, but it's maintaining steady around 23 cases, uh, per, per week. The positivity rate in Yakima County is, uh, 15.9. And, uh, we are seeing, uh, I think there are another two doc, uh, new documents that we're sharing with you this evening, uh, which are pie graphs, which indicate the percentage, uh, who have initiated the vaccines. So we have, uh, an unvaccinated number and out of the total population of what we're seeing in the community, unvaccinated is at 54.4. And, uh, uh, currently, and that would be then the total population vaccinated would be at 45.6, uh, in our community. And of course that is Yakima Health District data. And if we're looking at, uh, 12 and up, uh, with respect to the vaccine, uh, 12, ages 12 and up, we see the unvaccinated at, uh, 43%. And 12 and up, the vaccinated, uh, is 57%. That's the initiation of the vaccine, so that is, uh, one dose. If you're looking at a fully vaccinated number, the total population currently is at 40%, 40.6% in, in our area. Uh, and, uh, there are a couple of other, uh, graphs that we could certainly share, but the bottom line is that we are seeing an increase and we, uh, certainly are not relying on hope as a strategy, but we are crossing our fingers and continue to, uh, hope for the best as we, uh, near school, knowing that we are coming back currently in full reentry with all of our students. Uh, the big, uh, decision will be of course, uh, what it looks like with masks. And currently, after having several weeks without a mask, I think most of us know in this area, this is really our first time back into a facility wearing masks and it, it has gone back to feeling very uncomfortable to have this. So, uh, we are certainly hoping for the best in the decisions that come forward and that we can see a decline in the, uh, uh, infection rate and increases in the vaccination rate. Any questions on this?
Just a comment, the CDC did come out today and say that, um, masks should be worn by all in an indoor setting, not just those who are unvaccinated. So, um, we will need the community's help in order to make sure that we can reopen in full. Um, the school district can't, can't do this all by itself. So.
Thank you. Uh, I'll continue with the report. I, I, I'd forgotten how much my glasses fog up with these masks on again, so I have to keep, I, I, I should have gone with the contacts today, but, uh, we're going to be back to taking them on and off. Uh, our, our next, uh, quick presentation, uh, I've asked for our new principal of Davis High School, Heather Hasty, who is also, uh, the individual who is overseeing our summer school program, uh, to present some summer school, uh, information about what it looked like over the past month and respond to any questions, uh, from the board about our summer school and, uh, uh, the events that took place. Heather?
Okay, thank you so much for having me here. As you heard earlier, we wrapped up summer school last Thursday and we want to thank you. Uh, we had a lot of positive, um, input and feedback from parents and community members, which was wonderful. And that's due to, um, the support of everybody and especially our students. So you'll hear from very briefly as soon as I'm done updating you on our numbers and such. Um, we had multiple programs offered. We had every student in the Y S D was invited to at least one of the programs that was operating. We had a very robust summer school this year as compared to previous years. And so we were able to provide literacy program, a migrant program, a STEAM program, high school programs, acceleration and credit retrieval, middle school programs, project based learning. We were able to provide a lot of different programs and then individual buildings also ran some programs as well. Um, as far as the numbers who actually attended, the total number of attendees was 1,830. And so that's after all the programs pre-K, we ran a pre-K program too. We actually had 73 of our pre-K kids attend, which was really great. And so we, um, that total number was terrific. We, um, would love to have even more next year. What I will say is the success rates of the students in the program, and this is of all, so it's inclusive of the high schools as well. So our success rate overall was 88% of students who attended. The elementary success rate was about 96%. And when we looked at the high schools, what it was is that we have students who began a course, they get to continue those courses into the fall. So we're, we're hoping that rate goes up even higher as well. Um, all students were invited, that was a positive. Flexibility in programming projects, fun learning is one of the big things we heard a lot from the kids. We had a lot of fun and enjoyed it and learned a lot. Um, they, student or parents really appreciated the transportation for programs as well. That was a, a large thing because then we also had some students who could do two programs, an AM and a PM. And, um, staff, one of their big feedbacks was that they saw great gains in the students, yes academically, but especially socially. And so that's a huge thing as we go into the fall. So I wanted to share that. Um, as far as some of the challenges, our processes, the timelines, the hiring of staff, people were tired this year. And so the hiring of staff, um, took some time finding staff. The variety of funding sources is, it's terrific, it's wonderful. It allowed for the, the robustness of the program, but it can also, um, create some barriers when, when, um, providing the different programs and how we work specific things. Um, and then as far as just, just depending on the programs and such, just being able to, next steps as we went through this and, and as a we, this is a huge collective we. It is pretty much everybody in the district who is involved in this. And so from transportation, maintenance, food service, principals, students, families, teachers, you know, it's just a matter of having very clear defined processes as far as next steps for summer school going into next year and then probably starting the planning, I would say at the end of first semester, which would be the end of January and if, if not even before. Oh, I know that we're already, we also have intercession coming up, which will be really nice, um, for buildings to provide students access during that time as well. Um, but I, we really wanted to thank you and tell you how great it is that we were able to provide this. In your board packet, I believe you have a breakdown of the elementary STEAM program that shows basically pers- it shows percentage by each letter. So the science portion of it, and sorry, my eyes are getting a little bit older as I look at this, but the science portion of it, we had, yeah, thank you, 30.8% or 30.6% of the students in the K4 STEAM camp did science, 12.7% did technology, 20.8% did the engineering, 24.1% did the arts, and then the 11.7% did the mathematics. And thank you to Jewel Brumley for providing that data. She provided a lot more data too, that I'll have in an actual ends report, um, by the end of the summer for you guys. So that is just a quick overview of what we were able to provide and some of the positive feedback. And before we end, I would like for you to hear from Jaylene and from Ms. Merrill real quickly, who were in the summer STEAM program at Gilbert.
Ms. Merrill from, I, I actually teach third grade at Roosevelt, um, and then I got to teach at the STEAM program, the STEAM summer camp at, uh, Gilbert, um, third grade, or they were third graders, actually fourth graders, so they were going into fourth grade. But, um, and I, uh, I actually did engineering kits, so, um, we did all, all the letters, all the STEAM letters. Um, we also did the short week for, um, July 4th, we had July 4th, we, we had a short week, so I did some coding because I, I run a coding club in my school. And so I taught the kids how to code, right? Jaylene was one of my students who got to be there all five weeks and she did an awesome job. And, um, we did a lot of things like, um, we learned about, well, can you tell them some of the things that we learned about? Okay, go ahead.
We've learned about engineering and building like, like, um, engineers, they solve problems and they make technologies. Technology is something made by humans.
And so we did things like, um, we made a hand pollinator, right? And we, um, we made windmills, remember? Yeah, we made windmills. We also, um, what else did? Yeah, we made sailboats. So we were testing what materials make the best, best, uh, so that we could design our windmills. So we tested different, different materials, right? Um, these kits were really great because they brought in literacy and it really focused on learning about different engineers. And so not only did we learn, we used literacy to jump into the, into the engineering. We then, um, we did a, we did an activity where we learned about what that engineer does and then we, um, and then we would test materials so that we can then build on our last day. And so we also did, we, remember we made the Play-Doh, we, we made the, the process better. And then our last one was, do you remember what we made the last week? We made bridges. So we learned a lot of cool things about that and I wanted to share a couple of things. Um, I had students, uh, give me feedback because that, I, that's just something I like to do. So, um, a couple of the kids, some of their feedback was they had fun. Um, also one kid wrote on his sheet that, um, he learned that it was okay to make mistakes. And I thought that was the greatest thing for him to walk away from. And, um, also learning about what an engineer is. And I thought that that was really cool because maybe they're going to be sparked now and decide to become an engineer and do some cool things. And, um, and then it was just really amazing to see kids, um, participate and be excited because it's been a little while. And, um, I also know that I did have a student that came week one who really didn't, he had, he was just there because his parents made him go, but by, and he only did three weeks, but by week three, he was like, this is so much fun, I learned so much and you're the best teacher. And I was like, oh, you know, so, and then he was like, I wish I could come the next two weeks, but he hadn't signed up, but he was, he was, he was that kid that was like, I don't really want to be here too. I'm having so much fun. So it was just an exciting thing to see kids really get excited about learning, huh? And Jaylene was one of my, one of my students who really was excited about testing things. Did you want to say anything else, sweetie?
Um, we would always, um, make the Play-Doh and we had turned out bad, but sometimes we would, um, make different discoveries and find out different materials so we can make everything better.
Very nice.
Thank you for providing this opportunity and I hope that it can be something that happens in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill, and thank you, Jaylene.
Thank you, that was.
It makes me wonder how many engineers we just sparked.
Yeah. It, it, it was a phenomenal opportunity to have a STEAM camp and I appreciate that, uh, Principal Hasty, that it was broken up, uh, by, by letter so we could find out how many participated in each component. Uh, speaking, uh, as a parent, which I rarely do, uh, I have a child at Davis and a child at Eisenhower. I had one child who chose not to participate during the I had one child who chose not to participate during the summer and one who did. And I appreciate the flexibility of summer school. He was involved in athletic events that were happening during the same time and couldn't attend a two-week consecutive, but was able to attend part of one session, part of the second session, and then have that count towards a credit and was participating in welding during that time. So it isn't simply in one area or in the fully academic areas. All areas are academic, but some are outside of that realm of math and writing and history. We do have a very robust program for students to be involved in hands-on, skill-building activities, skill center programs, career tech education. So that did not fall by the wayside during this time as well. So thank you again, Principal Hasty, for your leadership during this summer and the summer program and for the suggestions for improvement in the future. Another.
Could I just make a comment? I appreciate the fact that there was so much excitement about summer school this year. And I think a lot of that had to do with the offerings that students had options to discover and to participate in. I look forward to getting the written report and kind of delving into that data because we know that right now, summer is this big hole for a lot of kids. And it would be great if we could have more than eighteen hundred participate. That's more than I recall ever. But to be able to have more participate would be wonderful. So thank you, Heather. I know that you had a couple of other things on your plate this time that were not intended, but I really appreciate all of the work that you put into this.
Thank you. And continuing on with the superintendent update, yes, the world's longest superintendent update. I, we just have so many great things to share with you. And I did share with you as members of the board and the community that we have made the commitment to finish the Davis auditorium. So I look over, I want to see Norm. There he is over there, got the fist bump going on. So I have asked Anthony Marietta, our assistant superintendent of HR and doing work in our capital projects area to provide the board with an update of progress and on the planning and moving forward with fulfilling our commitment to the community to renovate, update the Davis, I think we're calling it theater now on this document. Anthony?
Thank you very much. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. What we provided you here is four pages of schematics. On the first page is basically a simplistic overview of the items which will be upgraded to the auditorium. And there's a table, which you look at the four different drawings, will be able to show you which upgrade is going to go specifically where. On the second page here is really more of thoughts or ideas, not necessarily the exact, because we're still in the planning stages. But there are some very interesting and I think historic items that they would like to bring back. The building, which was originally a castle, the inside of the windows are still, are still there on the inside of the theater. So you'll see the black and white where from the inside, there's still going to be the interior window and would like to kind of bring that back to life. You'll notice just above the windows is the old original castle-style building. We're going to try to keep as much of the history there as we can and recycle or reuse like the sides of the seating that has the art deco to it, designs and look, feel. You notice the picture to the left is a render of what we believe the front could look like. Was going to go with a custom-made window treatment there, but the cost was too prohibitive. So Gary came up with a different and more unique look that would again stay in line and theme with the building. You'll notice over to the right, going back to the historic subway tiles and hexagon flooring for the restroom and the upgrades which will take place in the front lobby. Page three just overall has a side view of the acoustics and what the building could look like when it's through. And I think probably the least exciting part, but probably the most important on page four is the timetable for getting the project off the. So we have a very aggressive schedule here. And I'm sorry, my eyes are going as well. So I need to look on my computer and blow this up because there's no way I can read the document. We are currently in, in still the design development phase. And just wanted to give you an update of where they're at. As I stated, the design is still being developed. So they're looking at items like, for instance, those windows where it was a really great idea. But when you start to look at what the cost of manufacturing a custom-made window, it just did not seem cost-effective. And those were the type of things that kept us from building it the first time around. At least that's what I'm told by those who were here. So as we move forward, we will get to the construction documents would be our next phase, which we should be able to get by mid-September. As we move into that next phase between September, November of completing those design documents, they will then have the project that is ready for bid and publication. And then hopefully getting this project started by the beginning of the new year. If we can get it started by the beginning of the new year, again, our anticipated completion date would be the end of summer, early part of the next school year. So we're trying to be aggressive with this. We'd like to get the project done as quickly as possible to avoid interruptions to school, but at the exact same time, giving the kids the opportunity to get back into a long-awaited project.
Thank you, Anthony. Any questions from board members on this? I know this has been something that the board has been anxious to get to this point. And the closer we get to starting, I think the more anxious we will become. It's a long time coming and I love what I'm seeing with these renderings. It's just gorgeous. Any questions from board members? Thank you, Anthony.
We've got Director Walker is speechless over there, so that's nice. Yeah.
It's not often that happens, so we take advantage of it whenever we can.
I just said, I've been waiting fifty-three years for this moment.
Thank you. So the construction then would be set to start in January of 2022, which is fantastic and would be done relatively soon when you're looking at construction time. Time, so that's great.
Yeah, and I really do want to caution everybody with COVID and manufacturing being so far behind. You know, there's an item that we can't get right now, which is paint. I mean, they put our painting projects way behind. So this is what our plan is. Going to do our very best to meet this timeline, but please don't hold your breath. Try to be realistic about it.
All right, thank you. And moving on, the next component, I've asked our Chief Communications Officer, Kirsten Fitter, to share information about our character education words. And I will not steal any of her thunder. I'm tempted, but I won't. So I will just immediately turn this over to Kirsten, please.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, good evening. I am here to show you all of the different wonderful words that we have for character education. A lot of people might know this as words of the month. Our community has celebrated words of the month for years. We change them about every three years, and we have changed them. So we have new words this year. For everybody in the audience and for our school board, you can follow along either on Board Docs. School board, you have posters in front of you that have the character education words. And then you can also go to our website at ysdseven.org/charactered. And all of the information is there. I want to make an alignment to our strategic plan and most specifically to our profile of a Yakima graduate that the board and many people in this room played a role in defining. We have linked this year with that large committee that put that together, the character education words to the different traits of the profile of a graduate. So we have a nice alignment there. So that you can try and remember these words, I'm going to challenge you tonight as I go through them, to think of your birthday month or think of someone in your family's birthday month that's special to you. And as I read these months and the words for tonight, think if that person exudes that character trait or if there's something they need to work on. So if your birthday is in August, the word is tenacious. For September, it's honest. October is determined. November is fortitude. December is curious. January is inquisitive. February is patience. March is grace. April is adaptable. May is reverence. June is focused. And July is enterprising. So again, you can check all of those out. We also will have posters and flyers that will be included in our newsletter throughout the district. So congratulations to the school board for that alignment to the profile of a graduate. And congratulations to our community for their continuous embracing of our character education.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you, Kirsten. We, of course, also know that those words will be on the reader boards. And one of the things that Kirsten pointed out to me, of which I was not aware, was the way that other districts kind of look to the Yakima School District to align their character words in the valley. So she's had communication with other districts waiting for us to kind of release our character words so that they could follow suit. And I think that speaks again to the impact that the Yakima School District has, not only on the community, but in the extended community of our neighbors as well. Also, just by way of comment, as you look on this document, another commendation should go to the school board. When you look at the traits and just how it is aligned to the profile, that is a tremendous addition to this document. Thank you, Kirsten, and your team. Please convey our gratitude to your team as well. Wonderfully, the way that that is aligned and when we look at the profile of a graduate, so the community knows, and just a reminder for the school board, if you haven't seen, the state school board is now looking to delve more deeply into a profile of a graduate and are calling for contributions from communities to fetter that out on a state level. And it's nice to know that we're about a year and a half ahead of, probably about two years ahead of where the state Board of Education is on having a profile of the graduate out there. So thank you again for your leadership in that area.
They're actually doing a series of, I guess, public input, for lack of a better word, kind of Zoom meetings over the next few days to allow for folks to weigh in on that, so.
And then the briefest item that I have to share this evening with the help of Becky, if you would go ahead and rise there, is a bond update and some exciting news for our community.
Oh, so we are going to do the bond refunding on our LGO bond, and that'll come forward to you on the August second board meeting. It is roughly a little over five million. We're going to refund it. It's a private placement refunding with Capital One, and it'll save about roughly $250,000.
And this is money that goes back to the taxpayers, correct?
Actually, yes, and to us as a district.
That's great news. Thank you, Becky.
To visit all of our bonds and to make sure we're the best savings right now.
Thank you so much, Becky. I think that one of the things that we're able to show our community is how committed we are to being responsible in the way that we use funding and the refinancing of the bonds earlier. I believe it was earlier this year, very early this year. And now the second refinance is a way of putting that back into the pockets of our taxpayers, of which we owe a tremendous debt of gratitude for the support that we get from them around levy and bonds and other projects that happen. So it certainly is a treat to be able to do this with the community. Thank you. And our last item in the superintendent update, hopefully you found all of these very interesting and exciting. I certainly try to bring things to the community and to you as the board of directors, items that are of paramount interest. At this time, when we are looking at ESER funding and ability to access federal dollars for the improvement of our district at this time, we have to be very good fiscal stewards in that area also. So I did make a request of Dr. Darling to share some information along with a colleague, but I think it's just going to be, you're going to be solo this evening, I believe, so.
It'll be me until you ask me difficult questions, then it'll be Becky.
Then it'll be Becky who's not here, okay. So Rob, would you go ahead and take over and share some information about an update on ESER funding?
Yeah, so you see, we presented the slides in English and Spanish. So if you scroll down to the second slide, this is basically an outline of the three different components, the three different funding sources. The CARES funding that we've already received, the ESER two funds, which we are currently in the process of spending, and the ESER three or the ARP funds, as we refer to them, that we've been approved for, but we haven't received the funding for yet. So slide three, this kind of gives you a timeline of when the funds were released and when their end dates are. So the CARES funds were released last spring, and they were, and they ended June. And then the ESER two funds were released in March, and we have through September of 2023 to spend that. And then the ESER three funds or ARP funds, they will be released shortly, beginning, beginning of, middle of next month. And we have until September of 2024 to spend those funds. So this kind of shows you trajectory. If there's an overlap, it's good because we have schools and things that we use the ESER two funds for. We will continue those for another year at least using the ESER three, the ARP funding. So we're scrolling to the next slide. This is just a reminder of the 10-point framework where these are the 10 buckets that we can spend these funds in to, that are approved for the allocation of these funds. So we are going to track our spending in each of these 10 categories. So when we come to do a board report, you'll be able to see where are we spending our funding and in what categories are we spending the most of. Slide five shows you how we currently allocate the funding in the district. So you see the nineteen percent for reopening schools safely, eleven percent for providing physical, mental health. So this kind of gives you an idea of our current spending. So we anticipate that our ESER spending will, should follow the same model, but again, we don't know. And so we'll just be able to track. If we, if we get heavier on closing the digital divide, that's not a bad thing. It's just, it's a new way of tracking the information for us. The following slide, this is a kind of a breakdown of the previous slide. It's in a pie chart. So we're just getting fancy. So here in ESER two, this is how much we've currently spent or have encumbered of the ESER two funds, of that $23 million. And so we're, we've received the funds a couple of months ago. We've been in the process of creating a process, for creating a system for schools to spend the funds, for buildings to spend, for departments to spend the funding. And now we're starting to see those requests come in and see the money go out. A lot more requests have been made for these funds than we've actually encumbered yet. So in our next update, you'll see this chart will probably move quite a bit more. And then how we are going to report the funding to you is you can see the one through 10 aligns with the 10 different points of that framework. So you'll see right now, the primary encumbrances and spending have happened in seven and eight, which are delivering education, different forms of education for meeting our students' needs, and also closing the digital divide. Those are already some of our biggest allocation of funds. So this chart right here on page nine shows you the total is $24,963,213. We have 10% indirects that we've set aside and then 22 million, 22.6 million that we're going to start spending. And as you can see, we immediately give the buildings 20% of that funds for the principals and leadership of those schools to spend how they see fit to meet the needs of their buildings. And then that leaves currently 18.1 million for the district to spend to maintain operations that are ESER-related. So if we look at just this $18 million that we have for the district funding, if you click on page 11, that kind of shows you some of the examples so far of how we're spending these funds. So the COVID health screening costs, summer school staffing. So the COVID health screening costs, summer school staffing, computer equipment, internet hotspots, edgenuity programs, Project Gemini, these are all ways that the district has been spending the funds from the ESER 2 funding. Next, we'll look quickly at how we're allocating these funds, the 20% that went directly to the buildings. So on Slide 13, we said 20% went to the schools. Well, 47.9% of our district is elementary, so the elementary schools received 47.9%. So that's what this graph shows you is a breakdown by schools. Well, 48% went to elementary schools, 23% to the middle school, and then 27.8% of our students are currently high schoolers. Therefore, that's where the funding is going. And these are some examples on page 14 of how we're currently spending money, or how currently the requests have been made. So we've received requests for freshman seminars, specialists, high school transition specialists, student family connection engagement liaisons, instructional facilitators, social study teachers, math interventionists, parent educators, fourth grade teachers, back-to-school supplies, summer school supplies. And this is just a small list of the requests that we've already been approving. Every week, a team of us meet together and look at all the requests so we can make sure those requests are approved quickly so that way buildings can get hiring quickly because primarily, they're using these funds to get more staff in the buildings to help students. And then we haven't yet received the funding for the ARP funds, so we can't report on how they're going to be spent. But once we start receiving that funding, our next updates will show you our tracking for the ESER 2 funds and also for the ESER 3, the ARP funds. All right, what questions do you have?
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, the only question, the only question I would have is, when we spend kind of one-time money like that on staff positions and teachers, personnel of any kind, how are we going to build in sustainability for when that pocket of money goes away that we can sustain those positions?
Some of those positions aren't sustainable. And that's, that's the problem with funding that has a cliff, is when we get to that cliff, it's done. So we have to post jobs as this job, it will be funded through June of 2023 or June of 2024. However, when we get staff hired that we want to keep through attrition, we're going to do our best to keep them. But we do know that some of those positions will go away because it's temporary money. Yep.
Other questions?
Thank you, Rob. Just keep us informed about how this is going.
Yeah, we will continue. So this slide you'll be very familiar with, and we'll just keep updating this slide, and you'll see as encumbrances and allocations are going out.
Now, is the ESER 3 money dependent on whether or not the US Department of Education approves Washington State's plan? Or have they already done that?
Our ESER 3 funds have already been approved. And that was the plan that we had to have you approve, the big plan, a couple of months ago. So it's been approved. We know the amount. It's just a matter of them clicking the button, saying, okay, here you go. Yeah. So it's separate from anything else? Yeah, I mean, yeah, the state plan has nothing to do with our allocation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And that does conclude the superintendent's update for this evening. I'll turn the time back over to you.
Thank you. Next, we have the monthly financial update. Do you want to lead into this?
Me again.
Yeah, all right.
And yes, I would ask Becky, thank you so much for joining me. I appreciate you being able to do that from the pulpit down there, so thank you so much. She and I will go ahead and double-team this and do some back and forth. First of all, if you access as a board the document, the PowerPoint on General Fund and Financial Status Update, the summary, which I would like to share with you first and foremost, is that enrollment has decreased by an additional 42 FTE since, as compared to May. And as of June 30th, our final enrollment count for the year is 3.2% below our budgeted FTE count. So we're looking at a decrease of 510 students over the course of the last year. And I believe if my calculations and talking with Becky, we're looking at a total of 2.7 million in lost funding revenue, correct?
That's correct.
Correct, for that time. The district did receive notice of grant applications for the American Rescue Plan funds. That would be ESER 3, and this is what Dr. Darling just addressed. And for the community who is here this evening and watching, to paint kind of even a more clear picture, our ESER 1 CARES funding was around 6.5 million, just under 6.5 million. And all of that has been exhausted. Our ESER 2 funding was just under 25 million, and we're in the progress of spending that currently. And our ESER 3, or ARP, funds will be around just a titch over 56 million. And that is not currently yet available. So I know that we have some opportunity, then tremendous opportunity, coming forward. Anything to add, Becky?
No, that's great.
Wonderful. Would you, as you could, maybe take us through, maybe not graph by graph, but point out some of the highlights and trend data for all of us?
Certainly. Thank you. So the first slide there is our enrollment, and this is a year-to-year comparison, as a reminder. June is our last reported enrollment. There could be some corrections made to the enrollment based on any, anything they identify. So there could be some small tweaks to that. The next slide is the enrollment compared to budget. So the budget is a black solid line at the top, and you can see the difference that shows the decrease. The next slide is our general fund revenue compared to actual comparison. Nothing unusual to report there. The next slide is our cash flow. We're trending as expected for our cash flow. The total expenditures is the next slide. Again, there's, we're just a little under 1920 with our total expenditures, so we're doing great there. Our payroll trend is just about even. And then our supplies and materials, that slide. Again, we are just under the 19, or the, yeah, the 1920 year. Any questions so far on those? So the pandemic slide, the pandemic costs. Again, this should be pretty much a final on this slide as we move into ESER 2 and ESER 3 funding. The CARES funds, the pandemic costs, the focus of that, of the CARES money was for pandemic costs. So we've been tracking PPE, staff, essential workers, costs for distance learning. So if you flip to the next slide, this shows you we have a total of, at the very bottom, $10,785,000 spent on, just on our pandemic costs. And you can see the different funding sources there. We just have a few things left to capture, about $100,000 to finalize all of those costs. And you can see that's in the FEMA. I was informed today that FEMA is so far behind, it could be a while before we capture our last $15,000 from them. And then we just have a few technology costs left to capture. Do you have any questions on pandemic costs?
Any questions for Becky?
And the last slide in there is the ESER 2. This is the high-level overview by the 10 points. And you can see the top is the totals as of today, or as of June 30th, excuse me. And in each of those categories, how much we've spent in each of the 10 points, and then how much is encumbered, and then the balance remaining. So again, this is just a high-level supplementary to what Dr. Darling presented.
Any other questions from board members on this? Thank you, Becky. As I said earlier, all of this information is on board docs, which can be accessed through the district's website. Okay. There are no questions from the board. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the preliminary 2021-22 budget. Do you want to lead into this, Trevor?
Of course. I'd be, I'd be happy to. I want to thank Becky and her team for their diligent work on this over the last several months. And it's our pleasure to joint, together, present the preliminary budget for 2021-2022. And I would ask, Becky, would you go ahead and kick us off? And I'll, I'll join once we get to the 10-point framework.
Great, thank you. Okay, so 2021-22 preliminary budget. The first slide there is the overview. This is the overview of all the funds that we have. And as a reminder, so our general fund is the district operations. That's where we conduct all of our business. There's the ASB fund, which is a student fund. The debt service fund, that's the fund where we service all of our, we pay our principal and interest on our bonds. And then the capital projects fund. And you'll see there I have the expenditures set out for the auditorium. And then our transportation vehicle fund, where we purchase our buses. So if you look in the columns, let's start in the first one, general fund. We're providing an estimated beginning fund balance of $30 million. We are estimating total revenues at $284 million. Total expenditures at $283. We have our transfer out, which is $700,000. That goes to debt service fund for our LGO bond. And we're projecting or planning for a balanced budget, thanks to the ESER funding. So we should end where we started at $30 million for general fund. And I'll give you details on that on the next slide. So I'll just, if you don't have any questions on that one, I'll go to ASB, estimated beginning fund balance of $619,000. Total revenue is $732,000. Total expenditures at $771,000. This is showing a, anything in parentheses is a deficit. So they're projected at $39,000 over the revenue and estimated ending at $580,000. Our debt service fund, estimated beginning fund balance is $14.3 million. Total revenue is at 9.4, total expenditures at 9.4. And we should end at the $14.3 million. And there's a slight out of $7,000 positive. The capital projects fund, estimated beginning fund balance is $4.2 million. Total revenue is at $20,000. And the total expenditure is at $3 million. Total, the difference between that is the $3 million and estimated ending at $1.1 million. That, just so you, just to remind you, is YV Tech money. So from the sale of their old building at YVC, that is their funds in there.
Now, do those funds, are they allocated for YV Tech?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't go into general fund. It's an encumbered amount of money that they have access to?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The transportation vehicle fund, again, this is to purchase buses. We're estimating a beginning fund balance at $628,000. Total revenue of about $500,000. That's the bus, or the depreciation revenue that we get from the state. Total expenditures at $1,075. We basically budget our transportation fund so that we purchase buses. And then, so you can see the $575,000 deficit, leaving $53,000 in the ending fund balance. So any other questions on the summary?
Any questions from board members? We'll have an opportunity. This is essentially the first reading for the budget for next year. The board will have an opportunity to review the budget between now and our next board meeting in August, as will the community. Right, Becky?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So if someone wanted to review the budget, or the proposed budget between now and August, is that going to be online, or would they need to make an appointment to come in?
They could simply...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
We have copies in the district office, in our office.
I'm sorry, say it again.
We have copies in our district office.
Okay.
Want one? And we did publish that in the...
Okay, right now it's in executive content, but we can move it to public content after tonight, right?
No, our actual preliminary budget was made available to the public on July 10.
Okay.
And they just need to come into our office.
All right.
And ask for a copy.
And then we will approve the budget at our August business meeting?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Perfect. Any questions from board members about the process? We've all been through this before.
I just, a question. Is the only way for the public to access the preliminary budget is by going into the district office? Did I hear that correctly?
I will jump in there. So if anybody is interested in having the document, they could simply reach out to central office. They could contact me directly. So if you reach out to the superintendent's office or Barb Anderson, we will make sure that we actually email a copy or have a hard copy for somebody to collect if they choose to come in. So thank you for the clarification.
And it's a substantial document.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
And it's light bedtime reading, right?
But it's good news.
Yeah. Okay, nothing else, Becky?
Oh, so if you go to the next slide, I'll walk you through the details of general fund. And this compares last year's budget to this year and walks you through the plans that we have for 21-22. So again, the estimated fund balance is $30 million. We have a plan to reduce our K3 class size to 17.5, which will net us $3.7 million. We will have to hire an additional 30 K3 staff. So that is the plan.
And we have, I'm sorry. We have the capacity, I mean, the space for that?
Uh, Dr. Darling?
No.
No?
We...
Okay, so we're gonna like house them outside, or what?
Well, for example, Adams, Ridgeview, and Hoover, we allocated three new staff members for them. So Adams, they're hiring one new kindergarten teacher because they have an actual extra classroom. And the other two staff members are going to be floaters that support the other K3 classrooms. And so they will lighten the load of the teachers, but we don't necessarily have the space. Doug's, Doug's response is, well, if we kick preschool out, I have lots of room, but that's not happening, of course. So he was joking, but they're, they're trying to get creative. And so we will have specialists who will come in and pull more students for interventions, and that will count towards our class size funding. They'll be on the teacher's roster, like they're going to PE or art or music as a specialist. And then for his kindergarten classrooms will be down significantly because they're going to divide them among five teachers now instead of four. So that's one example of how schools are utilizing these teachers. Some are doing a co-teaching model, where they add more kids to a classroom and then double the number of teachers. And so they're, yeah, they're getting, some might be in the covered area outside. They're getting, yeah, you might see purchase requests for yurts. We don't know what we're going to be doing yet. But they're, it's not that, they're excited. And you know, principals, they're going to, they're going to do what they can with what they have.
I know a lot of districts do the, use the co-teaching model so that there's, you know, fewer students per teacher, at least by the numbers. So it's exciting that we're going to be able to get down to that. I know we haven't been able to do that until now. So I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, what that looks like and how that benefits the students.
Yeah, we are too.
Anything else?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Becky, I interrupted you.
Interrupt anytime. I want to make sure that you understand what we have planned. So continuing on underneath that, the next three items, the general apportionment, the TBIP, highly capable and LAP funds, and special education. I am budgeting conservatively on the enrollment, so you see a decline of 1.6 million in basic ed funding. And the other two fluctuations are in, in direct correlation with having a conservative enrollment count. Our transportation funding, we have a slight increase there of the 392,000. And that is, we are being rolled back to the 1920 funding, so that's a good thing. Our LEA money you see going down by 538,000. And LEA stands for local effort assistance. That, if you look at the blue line just underneath that on the local levy revenue, the 540,000. So those two net out. As our levy goes up, our local effort assistance will go down just about the same amount. Then you have, the next section is the federal revenue. So we have our SIR 2, we're projecting that we're going to carry over 19.9 million of the SIR 2 money out of this year that we're currently in. Our SIR 3, we're budgeting at 13.1 million spending capacity there. And Title I, we are seeing an increase of 2.4 million. So we will have the highest, I think, the highest Title I that the district has ever had, just over 10 million. So total federal, federal revenue, excuse me, 35.6 million. So total changes to state, local and federal revenues at 38 million. What do we plan to do with those funds? We have technology increases and district, district-wide insurance increase, unfortunately. Getting a little, we're getting about a 10% increase, which is lower than a lot of districts are experiencing. So we're happy about that. But that line there, 2.5 million dollars, most of that is technology. Then the K3 costs for those 30 certificated staff, we're projecting at 3.6. If you look back up to the revenue, it's, we're, we're budgeting this as a, pretty much a wash. So the revenue equals the expenditures. And we'll see how that comes out in the next year. Uh, we do have additional counselors, eight FTE that we're planning for, for a million dollars. We have 28 additional YA staff to support learning recovery at 2.2 million. 36 additional positions across all other groups at 2.6 million. There's our building budget allocations at 4.5 million. And then we also have learning recovery, the 10-point framework capacity in the budget at 21.2 million. Which totals estimated, total changes to expenditures at 30 million. Gives you the high details that we have planned for general fund. Questions?
I, I have just one. I'm excited to see additional teaching staff and counseling staff being planned for in the budget. Given the, kind of the nationwide standing on teacher shortages and counselor shortages, what's our projection on being able to fill those positions? Do we have any projections yet?
Are you talking about filling specific positions or all positions?
I'll just, the increased number of positions that we're likely to be able to provide for, are we going to be able to actually find certified, certificated and qualified bodies to fill those positions?
So I learned my lesson, the last time a question was asked, I passed over to Dr. Darling and he threw me an anchor. So I will go ahead and address this question, Director Walker. The, the answer is, to the question of whether we'll be able to, to staff positions is pretty much dependent upon the position currently, because we can, we can find some positions more readily than others. We are a big draw for certain positions as opposed to some of the surrounding districts. However, that does not fill all of our positions and we have positions that are more difficult to fill, especially when we look at moving to four schools with dual language entering in the coming year and knowing that that needs to progress through all grade levels. So this is where really our strategic plan, but actually even more important, our equity policy around focusing on HR and the building of pathways to create opportunities for staff to leave from the para educator ranks per se and enter into the teaching ranks and, and build those into our system, provides opportunity then to have a sustainable, more sustainable resource of bringing people into the district. So the, the response is with our counselors, we're not seeing an issue currently. We have counselors that do want to come here and we are a draw. When we're talking about certain teaching positions, then it may become a little bit more difficult and we have to really focus on pathway development, which incidentally, it is a good time to share then with you that we, we have expanded by one position, our extremely lean already HR department, which in comparison to some of the districts on the west side, personally coming from the Highline School District where we had 24 people in HR, coming to Yakima, same size, maybe a couple thousand smaller, with eight people in HR is a significant difference when you're looking at recruitment, retention, things like that. We've added one position in Will Suratt, who's moved from our CTE role to continue to build out around the equity goal of having a more robust pathway program. And that will be one of his charges in, in building that system over the coming year. In addition, this does give me the opportunity to share with the board and with the public that we are entering into a wonderful opportunity with the University of Washington by way of Meredith Honig, who is one of the first, one of the foremost researchers around Central Office for Form in education to focus on what we can continue to do to further restructure our central office roles to make sure that we are filling these positions. So that's a, an exciting opportunity that I will continue to report out to, to the board. But currently, right now, we are beating the bushes, so to speak. But our plan is to build the systems that don't, that are not dependent upon luck or hope.
Any other questions? Okay.
Becky, I'll, I'll go ahead and jump into the next, the next three slides actually go through our 10-point framework. So one of the things that we've done as a district is assess the way that we are currently spending funds. And as you look on the document, it'll have, for example, number one, reopen schools safely for in-person learning. That's about 19% of the potential SIR or type of the, the SIR 3 allocation coming our way that we could potentially focus in that area. So this is a guiding document for us to really assess where we currently are in our spending, what our historical expenditures have been and help us focus around the goals of addressing each of these components so that we're not simply out there spending money trying to, I, I mean, I hate to say it this way, but we are very blessed in this time to have funds that are coming our way through our Title I numbers that allow for opportunities that didn't previously exist. But we have to be very intentional about how we then spend those. So we are being responsible and, and responsive to what our strategic plan outlines. And that's the goal and purpose of our 10-point framework. And I would personally like to thank Dr. Darling for help, taking us through the 10-point framework exercise and helping to guide us as a cabinet level towards more focused and intentional spending in that area. And thank you to Becky as well, who facilitated that along with him. Moving then to the next piece, the four-year forecast of the general fund. Becky, can you take over?
Sure. The four-year forecast, this is legally required and holds little, little value in years three and four. What, what you will see in this, and this is the general fund on this page, there is a straightforward prediction for other revenues and expenditures. What I mean by that is we just put a percentage in to move us forward in those revenues that we can't, that we don't know about as opposed to levy. We know what our levy is, we know what our LEA will be from the estimate from the state of Washington. So, and you can also see on there that the enrollment has just kept stagnant. So this is a legal requirement for all funds. And if you flip to the next page, you'll see the forecast for the other funds. And again, these, if we don't know and we can't predict, then we use a percentage. It's about 1.5% moving us forward from year to year. But things like debt service, we know what the principal and interest payments are and we can project a bond. So those are, are set in there. Do you have questions on the four-year?
It's, it's something that we've come to expect because it is legally required that we project. And, and you're absolutely right, years three and four are kind of a swag at best. I don't see any questions here, Becky.
Okay. Trevor?
Am I up? Thank you. So I will take you briefly through our SWOT analysis. That means strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And again, thank Becky for her work in helping call these out as well. If you look on the document, we have three strengths that are listed in this analysis of our preliminary budget. One being the SIR 2 and the ARP or SIR 3 federal funding is there to support learning recovery. So that is a very big bonus coming out of potentially this, this pandemic. The adequate fund balance, we have an adequate fund balance to meet the board policy under 1,000.2.3. So that is great news, that we are, are living up to that responsibility according to our, our, our policy and to the public. And then we are working on aligning our resources. And you saw the 10-point framework, but also aligning those to the strategic plan. So I can't, again, understate the importance of our strategic plan and having that done right before we went into the pandemic, because it's making a tremendous difference as we exit the pandemic. The weaknesses of our district's preliminary budget, we are dependent still upon the general fund for large maintenance projects. That is something that was, you know, we, we did inherit, but we certainly own. We do not have a, a constant capital project opportunity to keep projects up to date. And we have to take that out of the general fund. If you look at some of the other districts in the state, they have very robust capital projects departments that, that, that make that much easier for them to address the deferred maintenance or the maintenance projects so that they don't become deferred. So our challenge is that we are dependent upon the general fund, we're maintenance projects. We also continue to see a gap in dedicated revenue in special education. That is significant to us as a district, but it is also something that is universal that we see across the state. So we know that we're not alone in that, but we do have higher than usual expenditures in our district going to special education. That does speak to our, to our commitment to special education, but it also is a challenge when we're talking about our budget. The opportunities that exist are around SIR 2 and ARP would be to authorize supplanting, to maintain the integrity of district operations. So we have this opportunity to figure out how to spend current funds and so that they become sustainable in the general fund area. If we can, things that we would regularly, regularly use with our general fund, if we can use the SIR fund expenditures, then the funds that we currently have, we're able to maintain beyond the life of the SIR and the ARP funding, which will expire within three years. So that is an opportunity. And then the opportunity for a, a future promotion of a future capital levy on what that could mean. And, and we certainly are trying to do our part in being, keeping our word to the public. We talked about the Davis Auditorium today. As you look around the district, you'll see that we have several painting projects that are going on at four of our schools currently. We have grass going in in certain areas that didn't exist previously. We have asphalt that has been redone in playgrounds and other areas, and those will continue. So those are, are tremendous opportunities that a future capital levy would continue to help across our district. So that's, that's an opportunity. As far as threats, I, I mentioned that we were down 2.7 million in FTE funding. So that is certainly a threat. If we continue to see a decline in our enrollment, then that does cause greater concern, especially if we maintain that low enrollment or lower enrollment after the pandemic. But I choose to be very hopeful in that area, but that does, that is a concern. We also remain dependent upon LEA, the local levy. You wouldn't imagine that that is the case if you've been here this evening and hearing about the SIR 1, 2 and the AR, AR, ARP funding. But we know that that's not sustainable and we still are going to be dependent upon, on LEA after the pandemic. And then, of course, you know, as we sit here at this point again tonight, here we are in masks after not having been in masks. And again, thank you to all of you here in the audience. We know that it is uncomfortable to be in masks. We don't want to be in masks, but recognizing that we are all here as adults and role models to others and that we, you know, by having this mask on, we are fulfilling the mandate that is coming from our health district and living up to that obligation. We certainly don't like that, but the COVID-19 variants that we see escalating, elevating, and I shared the COVID report with you earlier, that continues to be a concern because we just can't predict on what that's going to look like a month from now, six months from now, again. But we are very, very hopeful in, in that area. And I think have a better idea on how to be proactive versus reactive, the way that we were much of last year. Lastly, the last page, I believe, that we're sharing or penultimate page is about the investments for the 2021-22 preliminary budget. We have five areas and would you go ahead and wrap this up for us this evening, Becky? Could you take us through those five areas?
Sure.
That work?
Absolutely. So our teaching and learning focus, again, that learning recovery, aligning with the 10-point framework. That's going to be a theme for the next three years, and it's a good one. Our mental health supports for students, we're hiring additional counselors, nurses and MTSS staff. Our K3 class size reduction, we're hopeful we can get that down to 17.5. Our technology will continue, the one-to-one devices for all students. We're going to begin work on the new YSD Health Cooperative. And then a systems-wide equity audit to identify bright spots and key challenges will occur. Any questions on those?
Any questions from board members? Thank you, Becky. That was, that was a very thorough preliminary report. As I said earlier, if members of the public wish to review the budget, it is available for review and the board will be approving it at our August 17th board meeting.
And I just want to thank you guys for your governance and your fiduciary responsibility and for enduring through all those numbers tonight.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, next item on the agenda are comments from the public on agenda items. We have two opportunities for comments from the public at our business meetings. The first one comes at this time and it is for items that are on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak to the board is asked to sign in either online or prior to the meeting or over there on the sheet. I know of one person who wishes to speak, but I don't believe that that's on an agenda item. So there is a second opportunity that will come up pretty quickly at the end of the meeting. And that will be the opportunity to speak on that topic at that point. I don't see any hands raised, okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda provides an opportunity for the board to dispense with business that is regular and routine and sometimes is required by state law. Members of the board may have any, ask for any item to be removed from the consent agenda for separate action and/or discussion. Tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of minutes for the June 4th Stanton graduation, June 4th, Yakima Online graduation, June 7th, meeting. June 4th Yakima Online graduation, June 7th meeting, June 7th Davis graduation, June 8th Eisenhower graduation, June 9th, 14th, 15th, and 21st meetings. The budget status report for June 2021. Notification of approval of warrants for June. And the warrants tonight consist of one group of ASB warrants, three groups of general fund warrants, and one group of payroll warrants. Approval of personnel actions and approval of a lifetime membership to the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. This says for board position number four. And I'm wondering if, and maybe Dawn, you know, is it for a particular position or is it for the board as a whole?
I thought it was for those who are members of the Ayo Board.
I thought last, Barb, do you have a, can you come to the mic and kind of?
Yes. I actually have a mic right here.
Provide some information on this for us.
Yes, I called the committee and they-
Barb, I need you to go to the mic. It's hard to hear you. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now? Is my microwave microphone? Okay, I apologize for that. I did call and they did say that it is for the position member.
Okay.
And so this will stay with position number four in the board.
Okay. So whoever is occupying position number four, this would be a lifetime membership for them.
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. So that's the extent of the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have any item removed from the consent agenda for separate action and/or discussion? Okay. If that's, if that's the case, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Don't move.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Graciela. Is there any discussion? Okay, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis Jr.?
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva?
Aye.
President Martha Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our action items for this evening. The first action item is approval of resolution 15.20.21, territory transfer. You want to lead into this or just go to Bob?
Let's just go straight to Bob, please.
Okay. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening, board. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. I think the microphone will kick in soon.
Okay, so tonight I'm asking for your consideration on a resolution that would transfer territory from the Yakima School District to the West Valley School District. You may ask why this is coming before the board. There's a process that allows citizens to make a petition to have territory transferred where there's some confusion or some other issue related to the boundary. In this case, there were some citizens, Carrie and Eric Peterson, who moved to the Yakima area in 2017. They landed in the West Valley area and they ended up putting their children, their three older children who were school-aged, in Apple Valley Elementary School in the West Valley School District. In 2019, they decided to buy a house on North 61st Avenue in Yakima. So before doing that, they approached the West Valley folks and were told that they would still be within the West Valley School District and their children could continue to go to Apple Valley. From that point forward, their children were going to Apple Valley until January of this year, they got a notice from West Valley School District saying, well, your kids are going to need to go to Summit View Elementary now because we've done some internal switches on our boundaries and your kids are going to go to Summit View. So, you know, they thought, well, that's not great, but we're still in the West Valley School District. But in March of this year, they got notice saying, well, actually, you're not even in the West Valley School District, you're in the Yakima School District, and you can't come to the, your children can't attend our school unless you go through the, another process and paperwork to have that done each year, each school year. So they did a petition which goes to the ESD 105. And the ESD 105, once they receive a petition, has 90 days in order to try to get the parties, the two affected jurisdictions, West Valley School District and the Yakima School District, to resolve the boundary issue. So once we learned of it, we started looking into it, and sure enough, their property that they bought is unique because it straddles jurisdictional boundaries. On the petition, which is part of the materials that you have before you, there's a map that shows the shaded area of West Valley School District, and then the light areas, the Yakima School District. And you'll see that their property actually straddles on the west side of their property. It straddles the West Valley School District and the Yakima School District. And then also on the south boundary, it's straddling both districts. And, you know, I did some, some mathematical calculations. It actually looks like it's 52% within West Valley School District and 48% within the Yakima School District. So based on the confusion of the boundary there and my, my look into the situation, my recommendation is that we approve a resolution that would allow that property to just be within the West Valley School District. West Valley has already considered it and passed their resolution. If the Yakima School District approves, if the board approves the resolution, it goes to the ESD, and then the change in the boundary will be effectuated. If you don't approve it, then there's another process that they can go through, which involves a regional committee that's appointed by the ESD. Essentially, there are citizens that reside within the ESD boundaries that aren't affiliated with any school district, so they're, they're not administrators, teachers, or board members or anything like that. And then they would decide the issue. And then if, if for some reason the party still didn't like the resolution, then it could go to the superintendent of Public Instructions. There's an appeal there, and then that goes to an administrative judge who then makes the decision. And then even if the parties don't like that result, it can go to Superior Court. Based on the circumstances, my recommendation is to go ahead and allow for the, the boundary adjustments since only 40% of their property resides within our district. It just makes sense to clean that up, in my, my opinion. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions from board members? Barb, I have one question. I appreciate that you've provided us with what the options are for the families, for the family that's, that's asking for this. This is only involving just that one property, correct?
It's just the one property. We, when we were discussing it, we talked about the five properties to the north of their property, which those properties all straddle the boundary as well. But with those properties, they're about 25% within the West Valley School District, and a majority of the properties, about 75% of those, is within our school district. So that issue doesn't seem to be the same for those properties north of that one property. And the petition is isolated to the one property, too. We couldn't, we can't affect any of the other properties that aren't part of the petition process.
Okay, thank you. There are no questions from the board? I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 15.20.21, territory transfer.
Don't move.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Dawn Davis Jr.?
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva?
Aye.
President Martha Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, Barb. And so now you notify, I mean, you notify them or how do they find out about it?
The resolution, once it's signed, will be transferred to the ESD 105, and they'll take the two resolutions and then, not sure what their process is after that, but they'll make the boundary change official. Because there's, at this point, there's no contest on the, on the boundary changes. It'll be approved.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is permission to pay Running Start Program spring quarterly fees. Dr. Darling?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. So the Running Start Program is a partnership between Yakima Valley College and Yakima Public Schools. Running Start allows eligible high school students the opportunity to obtain college credits at reduced costs. This last quarter, 165 students from Davis, Eisenhower, Stanton Academy, and Yakima Online benefited from this program. We had 132 academic FTEs and 13 vocational FTEs. So we requested the board grant permission to pay YVC a total of $394,015.12 to cover those costs.
Any questions for Dr. Darling on this one? Okay. Seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion that the board grant permission to pay Yakima Valley College the running, for the Running Start Program tuition and fees for the spring quarter of 2020-21 to the, in the amount of $394,015.12.
Don't move.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Norm. I want to know what those 12 cents are for. Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing no discussion, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Dawn Davis Jr.?
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva?
Aye.
President Martha Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, but I did not know who said the first and the second. Can you repeat that?
Reverend Davis had the motion and Norm seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry for that little delay. This little laptop has facial recognition, it doesn't recognize the mask. Next, we have permission to renew the contract for ASL for the 2021-22 school year. Dr. Darling?
Yes, thank you. So as has been typical for the past several years, Special Education Services has been able, unable to find qualified classified staffing to provide American Sign Language support and supervision of YSD-certified staff. The law directs us to provide the services necessary to meet the specifically, especially designed instruction as noted in IEPs. Under that contract, ASL professionals would provide American Sign Language staffing support for the district. So we requested the board grant the permission to award ASL professionals for our 2021-2022 school year the amount of $300,000 to provide ASL services to support our students' special needs.
Are there any questions from board members on this action item? Okay. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion that the board grant permission to contract with ASL for the 2021-22 school year in the amount of $300,000 to provide classified American Sign Language staffing support to special needs students.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Dawn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis Jr.?
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva?
Aye.
President Martha Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the superintendent's contract. The board has had an opportunity to evaluate the superintendent over the, over the course of this last school year and is pleased to announce that we've reached agreement on his contract for the coming year. The board's annual evaluation of the superintendent includes a review of policy monitoring reports for which the superintendent has responsibility, a reflections document developed by the superintendent, an assessment of the district's progress under the superintendent's leadership, and extensive discussion by the board. This review affirms the Yakima School Board's confidence in Dr. Green's leadership and his positive impact on the Yakima School District over the last year. A portion of the board's annual evaluation of the superintendent includes a review of all monitoring reports and policy compliance elements contained therein from throughout the school year. A compilation of these elements concluded that the superintendent had a 99.67% compliance with all policy expectations. Although this has been a year none of us ever anticipated, Dr. Green and his staff rose to the challenge immediately. Over the course of a three-day weekend in March of 2020, they pivoted and moved our district from one where 16,000 students and 2,000 staff were in a completely in-person learning environment to one where we were all in an, in a virtual or distance learning model. Throughout the year, the bumps were ironed out and the holes were filled in until our virtual model ran smoothly. It was through his leadership that we were able to take the challenges of this past year and turn them into opportunities for years to come. A few highlights from the past year include the work of the Teaching and Learning Department, who conducted a review of all course materials to ensure they were appropriate for use as an online curriculum. They also developed many professional learning opportunities for our instructional staff to ensure they were comfortable with their new learning roles. The Technology Department stepped up and immediately began the process of purchasing laptop computers so that our district could become a one-to-one district. In other words, one laptop computer per student. Additionally, under the leadership of Andy Gonzalez, they created and embarked upon Project Gemini, which laid a mesh network across the entire district and allowed our students to have access to the internet for their daily lessons without having to park in the McDonald's parking lot or some other out-of-the-way place. Due to family situations, most of our students did not have access to affordable and reliable internet connections through which they could participate. The Technology Department made that happen. Our Food Services Department quickly converted their operations to a grab-and-go and bulk meal distribution process, which they continued throughout the summer of 2020 and this past school year. The end result was that our students were provided with over 2 million nutritious school meals while still in remote learning. I shudder to think the impact on them if they'd not had access to the school meals provided by the dedicated employees of Food Services. Another highlight of this year is the creation of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. This group is comprised of middle and high school students from all of the secondary programs throughout the district and numbers around 50 students. This student group, under the leadership of Dr. Marcus Pimpleton, combined their efforts with community partners and were pivotal in developing our district equity policy, which we approved last month. The Student Advisory Council is unique in our state with the breadth of student voice we are able to tap into. Dr. Green expanded on our existing community partnerships and worked with the Yakima Nation to develop a mutually agreed-upon land acknowledgement and a proclamation for treaty days. We look forward to expanding that partnership and further developing the relationship with our Yakima neighbors as we work together to provide opportunities for both of our students and teachers. The strategic plan is always foremost in our mind as we look to develop plans for the future. One element of the strategic plan is for our students to be bilingual and biliterate by graduation. Under Dr. Green's direction, the district will be taking a step this fall toward making that a reality with the development of a dual-language program in four of our elementary schools, which will- which will lay the foundation for expansion throughout the district. Under Dr. Green's leadership, relationships between management and bargaining units, leadership and staff, and the district and the community have improved. His open and transparent style has fostered improved morale within the district. The Board is extremely supportive of Dr. Green's efforts and looks forward to maintaining the positive momentum of our district and as a team, develop new and innovative ways to meet the educational needs of our students and engage our community in that educational process over the coming years. So as I said, we were able to reach agreement on the contract and would invite any Board member who has a comment, um, to do so at this time, and then we will look for a motion for approval and a vote.
Not sure that there is a lot that, that I could add to, to what you said, Martha. Just want to thank Superintendent Green and, uh, his staff for your leadership through, uh, this unprecedented year and for ensuring that students are, are first in all decisions made and, uh, look forward to continued contributions. Thank you.
Thank you, Graciela. Dawn?
Thank the students. Amazing inspiration for the hard work that they've been putting into this for the students. See the reaction of not only the students, but the teachers and students and clerical and just all the staff. How it's been with that feeding program all last year. It was just amazing. See, two million views being given to these families. The I T with laptops and you, you, you did, you know, your second year was just, and then in the pandemic, you did an awesome job. Thank you.
Norm?
I'd just like to say I look forward to many more years of working with Superintendent Green. That we just, we've made tremendous strides as a district. And, uh, like Graciela said, everything that he has done and advocated for has put students first, and that's where we need to be.
Thank you. There are no more comments. I would entertain a motion for approval of the contract for the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four school years.
Second.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Further discussion? Okay, Barb, could you take the roll, please?
Reverend Dawn Davis, Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva?
Aye.
President Martha Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, Barb. You want to say anything?
Very, just very briefly, uh, I would just echo the words, uh, that we heard at the beginning of this session with, uh, Andy Gonzalez, with our coaches, uh, the work that Sarah and John engaged in. Uh, all of these individuals acknowledged the people around them and, uh, it truly does take a village. Uh, I am very grateful and humbled to be able to be in this position. Uh, but I also, more important is to be surrounded with people who, uh, are committed to exceptional outcomes for students, um, to raise the bar and to continue to raise the bar, but also, uh, provide the necessary supports uh, at no matter the cost. Uh, and fortunately, we've been able to be able to do that. And, uh, again, surrounding ourselves with people who have a like vision and that are phenomenal in their own areas of expertise has, uh, been a joy, uh, not only for me, but, uh, I think we have a tremendous team. And, uh, certainly want to thank the Board and the community. And of course, um, I would be remiss if I did not even mention, uh, the students that have been involved. So having the students, Superintendent Student Advisory Council, uh, of which we saw a couple of our individual students that came and knowing that, uh, we are going to continue to grow that and have significant student voice uh, impacting what happens to them, our customers, to our customers, uh, and, uh, change our focus, uh, from adults to what, what we can always do for students. So, thank you for, uh, your support. Thank you to my, uh, staff, both, uh, up here. Uh, those who are not in attendance and those who still remain with us this evening. Thank you for, uh, your leadership in your respective departments and for making, uh, our district uh, a beacon in this tremendously difficult time and actually making improvements that, uh, we would not have made, uh, probably over, over multiple years, were it not for being thrust into crisis and being able to respond, uh, so well and react so well. So, um, again, the credit does go to the people that I work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We are truly blessed to have you as the Superintendent for our district. Uh, now we've reached the second opportunity for comments from the public. I want to briefly review the protocols. Um, as far as I know, we still have only just the one person who signed up to speak. The purpose of community input is for the Board to listen to the concerns of the community. Speakers will be treated in a respectful manner. The Board does not engage in dialogue at this time or typically respond to items that are not on the agenda. The audience is expected to give their attention to the speaker. Members of the public are asked to sign in prior to speaking. Introduce yourself and state all affiliations with the district. For example, if you're a parent, which school your students are in, you're a staff member, which stu, which school you work in, if you're a community member, et cetera. Comment on, on agenda items, as I said earlier, happen during the first comment period. The second comment period is for items that are not on the agenda. We ask the public to keep their comments to three minutes. Typically, we'd have a timer up here on the projector. But Barb does have a timer and you'll hear a sound, uh, when you reach the three minutes. This will allow that anyone who wants, who, who wants to speak has a chance to be heard. We ask that speakers speak only once on each agenda item, that they refrain from discussing the performance of an employee or the interpretation or application of the district's labor agreements, including grievances, and that they refrain from making derogatory comments about individuals. Tonight's, tonight, I, I do have, uh, an indication that Sandra Belzer wishes to address the Board. Is that correct? Good to see you, Sandra.
Same here. It's been a while.
It has been a long, it has been, our, our kids went to elementary school together.
Long ago. Um, I did, uh, one time have four children in Yakima School District. And, um, they're, they're all grown up and doing their own thing now. So I just want, um, to say a few things. I understand that this district has decided that they will teach critical race theory. So I'm here to make a request that you might look into something, um, like accurate history. And, and it is just very interesting over the years how much we've dumped from accurate history. One, slaves existed here before we became the republic known as the United States of America. They were already here. Great Britain had a pretty brisk trade and they had brought many here then. And if you go back further, Puerto Rico, which for quite some time was the only country allowed to have shipping trade, they brought a lot of slaves in to South and Central Washi, or excuse me, Washington, America. And, um, dropped a few off in Florida at the same time. So the problem existed long before we became the republic. Just want to point out a few things that I think are of interest that I think should be taught and whether in the books that we have now, or if somebody can add some sort of a, something else that would get that in, that'd be great. Chief Seattle and other American Indians owned slaves. In fact, the Salish tribes had quite a brisk slave trade back in the day. They, um, they, like the African nation, they had wars with other nations. And part of the war process was now you took slaves. And some of them were other Indians and some were settlers. Um, it varied some, but they did exist. The Indians did not stop having slaves until eighteen fifty fire, fifty-five, when it was required by the Treaty of Point Elliott. They had these slaves a long time. And I think this is going to get left out and it is part of our history. We also had blacks that owned slaves before we were the United States of America, the republic. Had blacks that owned slaves. How, colonials did a little bit of their own. Virginia allowed, some did, some didn't. But they were there and it just seems to me that that's an important part of the history to put out there. It wasn't just white slave owners, ever. It wasn't that way. Abolition started in seventeen eighty. Frederick Douglass, I don't know if we teach about him anymore or not, was a one-time slave and it was a pretty vicious experience he had. This Fourteenth Amendment and that three-fifths of a citizen that the black men had, the real reason for that, and Frederick Douglass was for this, was to limit the influence of the South. It was to help with the abolishment of slavery. There's a lot more, but I just wanted to give a little bit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sandra. I do want to clarify one thing. The district does not teach critical race theory.
So it's not true that, that you planned on, but this is just from reading people following or, um, discussions you have had and it gave the impression that you are going to teach it. So you have not made a decision on that yet?
We, we do not and we don't have plans to.
That is very good to hear. Thank you.
Teach critical race theory. Um, if you'd like to review any of the curriculum, uh, we can certainly make that available to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, I don't, I don't see that anyone else, um, has signed up to speak. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Do we have a need for executive session?
There is no need for executive session this evening.
Okay. With that information, I wish you all a, a wonderful evening and we are adjourned. Safe travels going home and, um, we will see you back here next month. Thank you all for being here.